Is going on. Need to accept them in the next December sixth, December twenty eighth, January third.
Actually, I'd like to make a point of order on December twentieth.
Okay.
Um, I made a mistake in having that recorded as a meeting and therefore those minutes. Shouldn't be considered minutes. They're actually considered notes.
Okay.
I was still working on the understanding that uh board members zooming in and board members present could constitute a forum. So when the emergency order from COVID was lifted, it actually. Members to have a forum had to be physically present and therefore I provided incorrect guidance and I apologize for that. Uh so those notes, those were actually notes. And um those should be constituted as notes and therefore there was not a legal meeting and we should not be voting on whether or how we approve those minutes. It would be a violation of that thing. So I apologize for that. I won't let that happen again and I have since been schooled by my friend up at the New Hampshire School Board Association, Barry Castillo.
Good. Alright, well, good. Alright, so those, so we don't need to approve the December twenty. So then we need a motion for the uh December sixth and a couple of minutes of January third. Well, we got motion started. Any more, any discussion on uh changes?
Um, I have more um this six, what month was that, December? December sixth, um on the second page under the business administrators' report. Um, the, it says, um, the wording is that the board said they feel they usually have a draft of the budget to review by this meeting. Um, we, we, I think what I said was we usually approve the budget to go to the budget committee at the meeting. So not, not that we feel we have a draft. I mean, that's always how it's been. That's the meeting where we approve it. Um, so I just kind of like that. Uh, just let me change, change and said, yeah, that the board, um, they know noted that, that. They all, they normally have a cop, the budget approved at this meeting, the budget committee. Just so it wasn't like we feel we usually have, it's a definite we do pass.
I usually have it, we usually get it, but then it's approved like later in December.
It's always, I went back and looked, it was al- always at our December meeting. Sometimes we have work in November, sometimes we have the first meeting, because we met really early in December this year. So, yeah, okay, it's usually the second or sometimes we push our meeting up, but we're back.
Okay.
I just wanted just to be clear, it's like, we always do it in December.
So change it to, we usually have a.
The, uh, the board, uh, that, yeah, we usually approve the budget to go to the budget committee at the December meeting, something like that, just so it's more solid.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, it's a, a small thing, but it was just, you know.
So the board said they feel they usually.
Uh, they feel, not they feel, we don't feel.
That they usually have.
The board says they normally approve the budget, that's better, normally approve that.
Okay.
Strike. So, uh, thank you. Anything else? I have something for some, for the other minutes. If anybody else has anything for December sixth. So December, or January third, sorry, um, on page two. So it says that, you know, that, uh, that I, it's probably expressed concern posting salaries. I, I want to note that I had concern for our employees' safety with the, with the posting of that information. Uh, due to what happened at last year's district meeting with the right to know requests. That was the reason I brought up my concern, my concern, because people were threatened and harassed, some people had this information, so. Um, so just a piece about the safety, yeah, in light of what happened at last year's district meeting. Just want people to know that that's a concern of mine. And other than that, um, I'm good.
Get all that Maria?
Yep.
Thanks. So then, just lead to, um, all those. Yeah, we can, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Trying to put the words.
Too much.
Yeah. Bye. And can I, any objection, you know? There's some comments. Don't have, you got any to say this thing?
Has anybody online, has, is there anybody online?
Happening. Everybody calmed out, wanted to.
Alright, usually we have a couple.
Yeah. Alright, maybe they're all the guys blocking. Um, student board member, is he, is he coming to meetings?
He, I have had quite a few conversations with him. It's, some of it is his difficulty getting transportation now that it's dark and things. So like in the fall, he would keep just walking here.
Cause he lives close by.
Not too far away. He walks from school, but it's dark and.
Yeah.
And his mom's not extremely comfortable with that, her transportation is like. So, I mean, he did do a report as brief as, but yeah, I mean, I've asked him, you know, it's just something he can do.
Yeah.
Uh, he really wants to do it.
Can he do an online, can he do off, because he's longhand?
He could, I, if, now.
He has access.
Yeah, he, when he wrote this, actually I typed it up because he wrote it longhand, because he didn't have a computer or a笔.
Longhand?
Longhand, it's an actual thing.
But is it printed?
Alright, I'm old.
I like it. Was it printing or cursive?
Uh, print.
Okay, well, just saying that for Sean Mary, that's all.
So maybe see if he can, if he can't make it here physically, maybe he's in, that would be great.
Yeah.
I know, we just handed back laptop, I think.
Right, he's got it now, yeah, he got it right.
Any questions on Madison's report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have, there was quite a bit um in the report. I want to highlight just a couple of items. I'm gonna save cyber attack update. Uh, to Mr. Thario who has that in his report. He can do it so much more justice than I can. A, a couple of items. Kindness one oh one is a uh program that we're going to look to introduce to our teachers and get feedback on. I met with a couple of teachers just before to be exact. Um, it's Steve Hartman on the road from CBS News and it is a series of four to five minute videos on different elements of kindness. So listening, patience, gratitude, positivity. Um, and the, the idea is that we use it once a week in advisory just as a starting point in grade six through twelve. Um, it looks like the day that the teachers are recognizing it as a good day to do it would be on a Tuesday. Uh, so on a Tuesday morning advisory, every classroom, uh, the idea is that every classroom advisory starts today by watching the same four to five minute video. And then having prompted discussion about what it is they just watched and giving kids the opportunity to talk to each other and talk with adults about this element of kindness. We know that not all students will embrace it. We know that not all students will want to participate, but we think that. Uh, it's really important that all students and all staff have a single and consistent touch point. That they then through the week can refer back to when there are instances of uh disrespect or some need to address some kind of behavior. And say, what'd you watch on Tuesday? Or do you remember watching that kindness one oh one video? Let's talk about that for a second. Um. It's important to us that we have that level of consistency, especially when we're talking about kindness and we're talking about how we're behaving. In school, in our school community, that's for staff and for students. So this is something we've been working on, thinking about. Talking to people about for at least the last six to eight weeks, uh, because we don't want to give a teacher, say here, do this. Still spending time with teachers over the next couple of weeks, getting their feedback, their input, making sure they're comfortable, they understand. It's no part. It's been, yeah, let me have it because I need something for advisory like this, uh, but we want to make sure we cover all of our bases. To review it. So anybody can go online and look at it. If you can just Google kindness one oh one, you can check out what the whole situation is. It's pretty impressive. And you want, at the end, you usually say, I'm not crying, you're crying. Pretty touching.
I'll have to make sure I'm prepared. My tissues ready.
Uh, we have through our, and we'll, you know, you'll see more of the program studies, but through our PSAT program, a review of student transcripts. From this year, their academic progress, particularly in grades ten and eleven, and for, of course, uh, grade nine. Uh, identified uh almost forty students who would be able to participate in one of our AP courses and introduce two new AP courses. That through the results of the PSAT demonstrate their uh high probability of scoring a three or better on the AP exam. Uh, so AP seminars, of course, that brought this applied to college boards for us to be able to run and that's for. Uh, sophomores. It replaces, it, it replaces the English honors course. It, it is a gateway course to the advanced placement program. Uh, it introduces AP to students. It involves a lot of skill building around writing, research, um, critical reading. Um, and uh argument, which our students are super at. And really opens up the door for more AP courses, junior and senior year for them. The other new course that we'd like to introduce is APR history. Uh, we identified sixteen students who Mr. Benson would love to have as for an APR history course. Uh, and he's thrilled to, to learn more about it and then there'll be an AP institute this summer that we want him to enroll in. We recovered that cost for him to go to training, thank you. Couple of other AP courses that are in the program studies, but the important part is that on February sixth. In the morning, starting at, at the advisory time, we're gonna have an AP breakfast and we're going, we're going to invite all of the students that we've identified. To, to the breakfast and we're gonna have a conversation with them about why we believe they can do this. Why we think it's important for them to try at least one course. We're going to ask a couple of our AP teachers to attend as well as a couple of our current and past AP students to attend. Sit at the table and actually converse with kids about, hey, here's what the experience is, here's what I learned, here's what I went through. Is it hard? Yeah, it's hard, but it's rewarding, it's challenging. Um, you're gonna love it. Yes, there's a little summer work, but you know, that's, that goes with the course. Uh, and we really hope that that's gonna, you know, increase some interest for some of our students. We understand not all of them will want to enroll in an AP course, but we certainly want to let them know, one, we believe that they can. Two, that they have the opportunity with a number of different courses. And three, that they actually take that leap and try it, because we, we know the research really screams that if you try at least one AP course in high school, you do far better in college if that's where you choose to, to go after high school. And the skills also that are built in the AP course don't just translate to college, but in any job, doesn't matter, all of the different work study practices that. That advanced placement courses offer are, are super important for our employers or employees of the future. So. Um, we're excited about that. Um, you'll be copied on the invitation. You'll certainly be invited to attend, participate in the conversations, see how it goes. Um, we're looking forward to it. I know Mr. Barth is looking forward to the breakfast itself, so. Everybody likes a breakfast buffet. Uh, and the other topic that I wanted to touch on, because I sent talking points to you today, uh, was our visit to the Cheshire Career Center uh yesterday, or excuse me, Monday. Um, this originally was going to take place prior to the break, uh, but we had a little technical uh issue with our computer system, so couldn't go. Um, and so, um, Mr. Barth, Ms. Thompson and I were able to attend on Monday, spend a couple of hours at the center with Mr. Town, who's the director. Uh, we met, uh, all of this, all of the teachers and all the programs, except for those who were absent or on prep. We met a number of students. Uh, we really liked what we saw, uh, liked what we heard. There were uh several compelling reasons for us to want to recommend to the board that we consider shifting from Wyndham Regional Career Center to Cheshire Career Center. To the point where we worked out a schedule and what it would look like for students. Uh, so seniors, what would their day here and there look like and what would sophomores and juniors look like? Um, so I put together uh five specific reasons why we believe, and I just wanted to read in the record, that the number of programs would increase from twelve to seventeen, and I think that's a considerable number. Our students bring so many varied interests in what it is that they want to do. We think that we could spark interest for students who didn't even think that they wanted to do something like fire science. Uh, or video and television production, but the number of courses that they offer at the, the career center, um. It, it is more than what I've seen in other uh districts where I've worked that have a career in technical education. So they may offer the most in terms of the number, seventeen's a high number. Uh, and they have the space, holy smokes, do they have the space for it. It's incredible. Um, the tuition is obviously a, uh, an important consideration. For us, it wasn't the most important. It really was expanding student opportunity, but. The tuition cost is remarkably different, uh, indicated the, the difference, particularly the net cost after the reimbursement from the state. And remembering that transportation is a hundred percent reimbursable for CTE students, so. Um, it was, it would, the difference would be either six students going to one or thirty-five students going to the same amount of money.
Yeah.
It's a big number, right?
Because it's dangerous, a lot more coverage of the money than a big difference.
Right, right. And do we expect thirty-five in the first year or two? No. Uh, so we would see hopefully the, an increase in the number of students, but also a reduction of costs. Uh, and that's important. It's budget time, we want to make sure that we're finding those savings. Uh, we'd want to partner as a member of the region, uh, and if, uh, the board would like us to move forward. With doing that, I would reach out to Rob Malley tomorrow as a superintendent to see what we need to do, and if we're not sure, we would contact the state. And talk with Dr. Beard, who's the director of CTE program for the entire state. And see how we become one of the four districts that are in that region right now. It's obviously. When that knock, it fall now. And what that does is it guarantees a certain number of seats. In every single program based upon the percentage of your enrollment in the region. And so we do bring the smallest enrollment, so we would get about seven percent of the seats, which is one to two uh seats. Uh, it, it's rounded up to two seats per class, per program. And then after all of the guaranteed seats are taken. There are districts like Conval who then get leftover seats, so their students can choose classes as long as they're not full. So the advantage to being a member is you're guaranteed to have kids be able to get into the programs they want. As opposed to, here's what's left, you have to choose, even though I know they're, they're first or second. And you know, the ones that always go fastest, cosmetology goes fast, culinary goes fast, um.
Automotive.
Automotive was pretty, pretty popular.
Conval sends several of their kids for the automotive program because they couldn't fit the seat at four national, so they might look at. Three different programs.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, and so, uh, three other reasons, um, pretty straightforward that, you know, we would be back in lockstep with our interstate standards. Uh, as opposed to Vermont State standards, so our students going over there under their CTE academic standards. They vary, they're not better or worse, they're just different. This is just a straight alignment to what the New Hampshire eighty-three oh six standards are for our CTE students. Um, the academic calendars, I know it may sound like it's not that big a deal, but if you ask any employee in Hinsdale, when they have to take a vacation week. A week off from their families, that is a big deal. So that to me is pretty significant for our families, particularly our employees. Because we follow Wyndham Regional, which follows Mass and Vermont, so we're on the off week. We'd be back in line with, with the Hampshire. The Hampshire skiers or slippers.
But that also, and it's.
Go ahead, please.
No, it also, you know, basically our kids, because vacations don't always match up, this year it's a little bit better. They can conceivably, conceivably miss two weeks of, of, of program, because we're on vacation and then they're on vacation. Especially that April vacation this year.
So, so really, four, because.
Yeah, February.
Well, February, she works.
Oh, okay.
But for kids, it works.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And then, um, anticipated growth, uh, you know, in our exploratory committee, we're talking about trying to tuition students in. Uh, in our surrounding districts, those students are already attending, uh, the Cheshire Career Center and therefore if they were to change their home district. Their enrollment wouldn't shift in the career center where they're attending presently, so there would be an increased cost. That would be factored into whatever agreement we would have with the sending district. If we were to remain in Wyndham, we'd be adding students to the, to that number and it'd be a much more expensive cost.
But we would get more seats, like you wouldn't add total kids to CCC, but then instead of getting two seats, we might get four, because they'd be more Hinsdale kids.
That's correct.
So it'd be benefited for us and they won't have to add staff.
Correct, it would be, it would be a boon for both the just, the sending district and our district. Because it would increase the number of seats available for all of the students.
Yeah.
And then the receiving school would obviously get increased tuition, uh, but we would have a guarantee of greater number of seats because we represent a larger population. Yeah, so, so there are a lot of wins there. Um, Karen, can you add to this in terms of our turns and then John?
I think one of the things that we took away from it was, uh, you know, they have, first of all, there's spaces, just my fault, every time I walk in there, inbound space that happened. Um, and as David said, the number of programs, but the other thing I think that was really helpful for us to see was, uh. They have a career center and we have, we don't, we always have to be very creative in our thinking and they need that. They've asked us like how, if our students are over there for one period, uh, or one block and might miss some time over here. How can we, how can we make sure that they're getting what they need without missing credit? So, so we've done that. We did that to the yellow. We learned, we've learned how to embed. Competencies into some yellows. They haven't done that, so I feel like they were, um, I know that Mr. Town felt hopeful that maybe we could help them with that. So that felt like a nice, a, a win for us. And the other thing is, is we, because we think outside the box of it, because we have to. We thought about ways that kids could spend more than one block, maybe do part of their day in the block and the other part we fill with the yellow in a very, um. Resource-rich area, so it's not, or not, they're not driving to New Fane, Vermont, earning a low, they're already in Keene. We can find sites over there so they could maybe do another hour or two over there, do a program and then supplement that with an yellow key. So I, that seems like a win-win also for us.
I have a question about that. So Keene High School has an ELO program, right?
I do.
I mean, technically they have an ELO. I can see your face. Yeah, no, that is, nothing compared to ours.
Well, I don't mean that, I, I think it's, it's very different than us.
Yeah, very different, exactly. So like, so you would just be working with them too, because you wouldn't want to encroach on Keene's ELO. So, yeah, I would just, and I, I imagine they'd be open to that. I just, when you said that, I thought, well, but there are any yellow.
Place that we would need to work together would be, uh, people get very, um, they own their sites and that's, that's what happens with the yellow. Guilty of it. But we have to share, you know, so I mean, that, that would be a place where we need to make sure that, um, I would want to make sure that we're not sending, placing kids, because kids are already there.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't sound like it would be a problem, but just, you know, unforeseen, like you said.
Play nice in the sandbox together.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, there was an eagerness on behalf of Mr. Town to do this kind of work together, look at embedded credit for core content. As well as expand the yellow opportunities, work-based learning plays, uh, workplaces for students. And he recognized, he actually came out and said, we know you're, you're known for your yellow program, so. Um, I think that there was definitely, uh, some eagerness there to want to work together and kind of make it a better experience for all kids who are coming together. Usually, I mean, here in Keene, there are so many more opportunities that are so much, a little more closely aligned of what we're trying to do than where we sent some of our students for their experiences. So that would definitely be a boom.
John? Oh, I, well, and now that Keene goes, starts later in the day, so eight forty is their first class. So, you know, our kids can come here. Go to advisory, get attendance, they may not stay entirely advisors, but it, there's no rush. I was talking to Mr. Bogio, he was assistant principal here. He was here at six thirty in the morning or earlier.
Yep.
Because these kids were waiting at the door and it's not fun in the winter.
It's definitely really early.
Wasn't it like six thirty? I think it was six thirty or.
Six thirty, yeah, so. So this is more advantageous for our kids for sure. Um, and even the blocks two and three, um, is more, I think, flexibility there. And they won't potentially miss as much. And what Keene is doing, which I hadn't realized, their fourth period block prep is all, all the teachers have prep. So there's no classes then, so we don't have to worry about kids, if they really wanted, let's say automotive two, just say. Um, then they have to stay there till three thirty, then get back here and that takes away from any student that either is working or, you know, athletics or things like that, or wants to do drama or you name it. So, uh, I think it will create more flexibility. It'll be a work in progress, for sure.
Yeah, one of the things Mr. Town mentioned, they're trying to schedule their modules to accommodate the sending schools. I mean, when you consider Palmout, it's a much longer drive. Down, try to build in, I think, first and second module for, for all the sending districts to make that happen. We would envision our seniors coming, starting advisory, having their first three periods here and then heading over to module three and then having their work-based learning or their ELO experience for the rest of the afternoon. And then our juniors and sophomores would come for the advisory for attendance, climb on and begin, uh, their module one, I mean, Keene. Return and be here for periods four, five, six and seven. So, there's a, there's a question in there.
Yeah. So the seniors would have an afternoon over there, so then they, they cannot play sports here then? So kids who want to do it over there.
It would, because it would be module three, which ends at, I'll put my glasses back on so I can actually see. Um, ends at one seventeen. And so their ELO experience, they, they're an athlete that can work with our ELO coordinator. Uh, in the site to, to work around that, but if they're a non-athlete or they're out of season. At one seventeen, they would be able to still go somewhere for a couple of hours or more.
So one seventeen, we sometimes have losses leaving at.
Right, and that, and that happens now.
Yeah.
Yellow, so we have to work around that, things like, I mean, and I think as Mr. Barth and Mr. Brian both said, it's gonna take some, it's gonna take some work. We do, you know, it's gonna take clear communication, um, and I think we identified that we would have a liaison that would be checking on all the things. Um, you know, one thing we don't want to happen is to just send back kids, like you can say, here you go, here I am. We want to make sure that they're having a meaningful purchase of the ones over there, so having that liaison. And so, so that we are part of, or true, um, it is really important to process it, so we would identify, we would make sure that's happening.
And we identify who the liaison would be, uh, because it makes perfect sense with some of the work that they want to do with us as well.
Without naming names.
Without, I don't need to name names.
You're saying names in your report, so.
I did not, I believe I included the title.
Yeah, which I don't think of you.
I can't keep up anymore.
We all know who you meant.
Um, so, you know, they're having that liaison, that representative consistently in contact with the, the, the center. Knowing the students who are there, checking on students, doing field site visits, going to the school and checking, um, are you going where you're supposed to be going? Or how's your behavior, how are your grades, what can they do to help? Are you getting, you know, making sure that they have everything they need to be successful. And to make sure that the, the center has somebody they can report to with, hey, we have an issue or we really need to, uh, address something that's going on, you know, that's where. Our liaison would, would come in.
Well.
And pull in the resources from here that we would need to address.
Right.
Uh, and so. So what we'd like to do, uh, and I, I've had this conversation with a couple of people and Molly and I have chatted about this a little bit, uh. Uh, this would be, I think, right before community conversation.
Yep.
And not for many people to come in here more about it, because it's a shift, it's a change. Um, I was wondering if we'd be able to tie it in with, um, the director from, uh, the career center coming and doing a dog and pony show that he's offered to do. In combination with our, any community member, family or student who wants to attend to be there as well, so we can do it all in one fell swoop with everybody, all the right people in the room. To answer questions that people will have, because I know parents are gonna ask questions that we haven't thought of and that's important for us to hear.
Um, and Wyndham Regional will come over and do dog and pony shows too, so, you know.
Yeah.
They, it's not like, you know, a, a crazy idea.
No, it's, it's pretty, I think, pretty standard, right? But, but it's, it was a great point that, uh, you know, our families really need to hear firsthand. What, what is, what does this mean now? So my, my son wants to do it, but he's gonna get one less class or two fewer classes at Hinsdale High School. Where are the credits gonna come from? We want to talk through that about, well, here's where the embedded credit comes from. We decide that a student can earn an English, math, science or social studies credit from a CTE program and that's done with teachers looking at. What are the competencies in that course? Is it something that we can award? You know, those kinds of things. I think that's super important.
Uh, so what is gonna happen with students who are over at Wyndham now? And I know sometimes they, it's like year one and year two. So what will happen with those students?
I actually thought, uh, April was gonna ask that question, so I'm glad you asked that, so I asked Mr. Barth for looking.
So, um, we have two students that will be interested in going to year two of the program. Um, which, uh, would be electricity, which is not more for that key.
Well, they're, they're starting it.
They are gonna start, but it's electricity.
Electricity.
Yeah. So we have those two students and then we have three students that are finishing automotive one in Wyndham. Which they could then go to automotive two at Key. And, and that's our numbers right now. We had a, one more additional one, either he, he dropped the program or he may be a senior. So, but those are the kids.
So that we need, oh.
Electricity, yeah.
So they could do either electric two program at Wyndham or they could do an ELO for their second.
And they'll be seniors next year.
And they'll be seniors next year, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why I thought of it, cause Cooper did that, and now he's, you know, doing his apprenticeship, and he's loving it.
Oh my gosh. Yeah, and he absolutely loves it.
Yeah, that's why I was like, oh, and it's not listed.
So they could, I'm sorry, now I was just started, so. They could, would he be, would they, the two students for electrical? They'd be able to finish from there?
We would want, we would wanna honor that, yeah.
Were they able, cause I remember for the longest time, like, we didn't have a minimum. Just number of students in our contract with Wyndham, but. Uh, two years ago, maybe. We, they had a minimum written into the contract, a minimum of five at twelve thousand dollars, and, and our num, our money skyrocketed, cause we had to send at least five. Is that no longer in our current contract, I don't have a copy of the current contract.
Yeah, so that's, that's a detail we're gonna have to review and try to negotiate if that's actually in contract.
Yeah.
Kind of pulling some apart strings there.
It, it was though, the last nego. When we negotiated the last spring, you have to send so many students.
Uh, minimum of five and a, max of ten, at least this was a couple of years ago in Waylon, for his last year.
Yeah, I don't know that, I wouldn't wanna commit to the numbers, but definitely that was the conversation. Um, so if we didn't hit that number, then the tuition was high.
It was higher, yeah.
Yeah.
So, so those are some of the details that we'd have to work through. I can't speak for, for Wyndham, but I think that, you know, talking about two students wanting to finish their program, wanna be. Find a way to make that happen. So. Um, so overall, I think it was a pretty successful visit.
That's great, yeah.
Um, I like the aspect, I like the, the idea of it, I like the idea of having different opportunities for kids that we've never been able to offer them before. Uh, I just like the idea of our kids being able to come to Keene and meet other kids, meet other kids that they've never been put out of bed, or. Uh, you know, seeing students from Menadoch Regional coming down Fall Mountain, so it opens up our world a little. So. Uh, if the board would like, um, we can move forward with looking to see what it takes to get membership in the region. And we can work to schedule with, uh, the Career Center, uh, information night for families and students. That's something that.
That's the need a motion to do it? Or with it in this.
Why don't we just to keep it on. Safe side.
Information to find out about the regional and.
Career Center information. Not in the official.
I'll make that motion, I'll second. Did you get it, Mary?
I kinda did. You can make it sound much better than that.
We should repeat it, but we don't. Oh my gosh.
No pressure. Um, so all those in favor? Any opposed? So.
Great.
That's exciting news, I'm excited to.
Is there, so becoming a member of the region, are we assuming there's gonna be costs associated with that?
I don't think, I don't think so.
Okay.
Uh, I, I don't know, um. It can't be prohibited, because other districts wouldn't, wouldn't participate.
Right.
Um, it most likely is an agreement that we sign on to, because the law has changed, it used to be a twenty-year agreement. Between a regional CTE center, it's sending districts and the state, and recent legislation knocked it down to four. And, and then I think the legislation's changed again, where now it's every other year. Yes, so. Yes, yeah.
You're basically going to contract with them, we're every two.
Every two years, yeah, and there is, there's a number of seats that you agree to, but they only bill you for those seats.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it works out pretty well. For, for kids who wanna jump in the trades, or at least, you can still go to college if you go to the Career Center, but certainly go explore what you wanna. Get into, the IT computer networking, uh, is something that students have not had an opportunity to participate in. We have a pretty robust program in, in our program studies, this would be phenomenal for kids to get that two-year IT program. Wouldn't it just? Yeah, then that's a separate program, you could do EMT or fire science, or within fire science, you can get your EMT cert. And then that you just do one year at a fire school. Be a firefighter.
Yeah.
Get a job, eighteen years old as a firefighter.
Crazy, um, Joe, you're probably the only one, cause it even predates me, it was like two or three years before I got on the board, why, do you remember why we decided to make the switch?
To Brattleboro?
Yeah.
I think it had to do mostly with the length of transportation and the fact that the kids know we're getting here so early. Of course, then Brattleboro went and changed their start time to later, and it kind of. Took away a little bit of the advantage that we had been searching for.
I feel like we were, when I was in squad, I feel like we, we did both. I know we did Keene.
Yeah, we didn't.
I know we did, I know we did, I know we did Keene. I don't think we did.
We didn't.
I feel like. It wasn't John Perrin, but. One went over to Brattleboro, I remember one of, in my class, I wanna say it was John Perrin, went over to Brattleboro.
Was it when we were doing music over there, or?
But maybe it was a one-off thing, cause they didn't offer it, and there was some kind of special, but we, we didn't have an agreement with Brattleboro, we had to do with Keene. You know, so.
I got my other name, I see here.
Nice, yeah, Allied Health, they're. Blowing that field right up, they're, they're looking at, trying to get students in the healthcare administration.
Well, there's such a shortage.
Looking at the drafting and design program and tying it into, uh, hospital design architecture, cause there's special certification in that. Stuff we didn't know, if it was blowing our mind, the things that they're thinking of not doing.
That's cool.
Makes you wanna go back to school. Makes me wanna.
It's the Cheshire Room.
Spent a lot of time in the, yeah, I, I got a little comfortable in the kitchen. I was hoping it was open, so I could start.
No, yeah, we get takeout every week from there in my office.
Yes, delicious. So, that would conclude my report today, I'll take it.
I have one question about the kindness, uh, one-on-one. Who's, thank you, you know, I was pushing this since the spring when legal totally had to start this, so I've been really happy to see things moving, but. You're talking about the middle high school, right, not the elementary?
Middle high school, that's correct.
Okay, so someone's gonna get in the works too for district-wide at some point?
Right now, what Mister Bogio and his staff are doing, it's outstanding work. Uh, there's not, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna poison that with anything I can recommend. Um, well, we, we talk quite often, we check in, I talked with Mister Don to give a point of it, there's no need to add anything to the curriculum. If that's something that, that Mister Bogio and staff, the elementary school wanna expand to, I encourage it, but I don't wanna intrude, given. The, uh, the rhythm that they have with their program already.
Okay.
Uh, but this is definitely a tool and a resource that anybody can have. You're not being excluded, I'm sorry, Joe. Well, I liked it, I mean, but it's really similar to what we're working on, the video that we watched was about listening, and. We talk about that in our morning message, and we try and embed it in the day, so I think, I think we are hitting on the things that we need to hit on. We're always looking to improve, of course. Yeah.
And, uh, business administrators. Yeah, I apologize, I didn't get a written report, but I was just trying to get the budget. Everything updated to get for the budget. Um, but, um, as you know, um. Pretty much the final, that's the end of the. Um, budget planning, I do have a couple more documents, uh, I have grants documents, and I'm working on a tax document.
On the tax what?
The tax impact document. Which of course is a. Whole list, and never in my years have I been right, only because tax base changes. I don't know what's gonna change too, and, um, you never know what you've got left over for a fund that one, that spays a lot.
And adequacy, right?
Yeah, and I can always tell you what the worst case is, but I don't do that. And I'm like, no, no, that's like absolute worst, so I, I don't like to do that one, but I can kinda. Um, but I did wanna just, um, change tack just a little bit. And, um, first of all, thank the board for approving, um, our assistant position, um, that we have with Miriam. Um, she's terrific, and now that, you know, I'm, I'm actually, believe it or not, I think I'm caught up. I think we've. So I'm now putting my attention towards doing cross-training. So tomorrow I have both, uh, Gretchen and Miriam. Um, I'm going to be training them on nine forty ones, which are our tax returns, really poorly, so there will be three of us in the office that can do that, so. Someone's out or gone, we have someone to back it up, we're gonna have those. Um, Gretchen's gonna, um, be working with her to help her, um, watch as she's doing payroll, so we can start getting that cross-training with payroll. In VP, it's always good to have someone besides business administrator be your backup. Um, cause she panics every time, and then, um, for grants, um, I'm gonna be having, uh, Miriam do a lot of work with our grants. Pulling their information down, putting it into documents that I have for the grants manager, so they know where we are after, um, Tom has everything loaded up. Um, we'll know right where we are on a month-to-month basis, so we can be right on top of all the grants, you know, from, from our lens here. So I did wanna just say thank you, um, because it's done, you know, it's slow getting it moving, but I think now that we're moving with it, like. The cross-training is huge, so. Please say thank you, because that's, we've got a good person. So I'm excited to have somebody learn the nine forty ones.
Do you think, can you send me the December, this, this report, December report officially? And I can forward that to the budget committee?
Oh, yes, yes.
They can get that.
Yes.
If you wanna just do that every month, after a meeting, and, and I'll just send it up.
I can do it on information like.
Well, whatever, this report is fine, yeah, as long as they get one, they're, because we haven't been able to go with the computer stuff, we haven't been able to get them. Consistent monthly reports, I just wanna start getting it to them, so they.
They're gonna yell.
It's just upon, they're, they like to, they like to say that they haven't been getting. I'd like to get it.
We like, we like to be their expectation, so.
Exactly.
Hey, I'm caught up.
Great.
That's a good way to start the year.
Yes, good, good. Thank you, you're welcome. Um, any question?
Yeah. Okay, I have a couple of questions, so. We talked at our meeting last week, was it last week, whatever, yeah, I think it was last week. Uh, we talked about a fund balance retention article, you, you know, about the five percent, you were gonna, is that gonna be like for our next work session or something? Yeah, I thought you were gonna bring it tonight, but I absolutely, I totally understand, but.
Together one for you guys, and did not put that one on, cause I wanna just take direction, cause I, I kinda got the feeling you were like, well, I don't think it'll pass in this, but.
Yeah, I thought we were gonna get one kinda look at, we can just look at it, and, and I have some wording that I've seen places, but I'm sure you have the same.
Right out of department.
I was gonna say, it's exactly where, yeah.
Yeah, I go right to them for wording, cause why, why Melish is there.
Yeah, they don't. Yeah, and they might not like what we say.
They review every benefit, but they actually do it in the apartment or in the portal.
Yeah, um, and then we were talked, um, and I, I wrote this down and meant to circle back, but you know how. The conversation goes, you know, and, and I never got back to it. When we were talking about the position reduction at, uh, the elementary school, the classroom position reduction, um. Patty also mentioned there was gonna be a spec position reduction, where's that at, which positions that?
It is in the elementary. Special, it's not a, a.
It was the, it was the unfilled position from we had the retirement last year. We're trying to hire somebody.
That's why.
For the non-verbal population in our school, and had no applicants.
Okay, so I, I just, I just wanted to note that when last year we discussed it, that's why I kind of thought it might have been. Um, you know, Kim had sent out this rationale about, you know, to the staff that, you know, we're not reducing anything at the elementary school because of X, Y, and Z. And I don't, and maybe I just missed it, I don't remember seeing it posted, like, the whole year, I'm sure it was posted for a while, but, um.
Yeah, we started posting it in December, we started early, cause we knew it was anticipated.
Anticipated, yeah, but then I don't know if it dropped off, then it could've just been me missing it, but, so that. Has changed, obviously, the rationale that he had last year for why we weren't gonna reduce that position, like he, he was adamant we needed that, so. I'm just asking, just because we had that discussion, it was a lengthy discussion last year within.
Yeah, it was just that, we're, we're not seeing that, you know, when we had it posted for so long with no applicants. That in planning, it didn't make sense to wish for an applicant rather than to. Um, go with a consultant that's been working with us in the past few years over the grant.
With a consultant instead of, okay, alright, cause I was gonna say, the needs, the needs necessarily gone, just because we can't find somebody, but the consultants. They're covering it, kind of, okay. Alright, that's up, and the funds were budgeted and we're consulting more. Okay, alrighty, um. Oh, when I was looking at the budget a little closer this, this weekend, so that there's a new position. I think it was a new position, if I'm reading it correctly, cause you know, things look a little different, so sometimes, just gotta get used to it now, but. A certified behavior specialist at HES. Is that the, the same as the grant-funded behavior interventionist, interventionist, and we're just like moving it and. Putting it in the budget?
Basically, yes.
Okay.
That has to, obviously, that's your ending.
Ending, so we're putting that, whereas at, at HE, HMHS, at the middle school, we are not keeping the behavior interventionist. And we're increasing guidance, okay, okay, just wanna make sure I had. The where is it going in my head straight, okay?
Yeah, and for that, um, position at the elementary school, Joe included, um, several pages, um, right up.
Yeah, okay, and, yeah, oh, and I was reviewing the notes, the notes. From the December twentieth minutes, that meeting, um, so I noticed in there, cause I, I missed that, 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 um. Gathering, without a meeting, it's like gathering, um, the, it said the board and Alex, uh, do so requested a breakdown of student-teacher ratio, so I. Um, that's, we should have that for the next, when we meet with them for a joint, because they requested that, Alex requested that. That's what the, that's what the note said, that the board and Alex requested a breakdown of student, which sounds right, they, every year. I'm just saying what I read, I'm just saying what I read. Oh, student to teacher. Oh, student, student-teacher ratio, that's what they, oh, not student to teacher, it's student-teacher ratio.
Use the student-teacher being.
No, I know, oh, yeah, I've never heard it called student to teacher, we just say the, the student-teacher ratio, anyway. Also, it said the board would like replacement costs of student desks and chairs to be a warrant article. That's what the, the note said, so just, and I didn't see that here.
Yeah, I did, I, I did discuss that one with Sean, um, because we have it as a, um, it's like four thousand dollars. And it's basically one-offs, it's not like, like before, we did two rooms, um, that were like sixteen of the desk and chairs. And it was the seventeen, and so at this point, it's just, if one goes, it's just replacing them, and having the money to replace them, it's, wouldn't be a. Like, we're wanting to replace thirty chairs.
Oh, I thought we were doing a classroom a year, I thought, is what he said.
Oh, that I, I thought, well, the plan was to do, I, was to do what we did last year, was to do two classrooms. Each year until all the classrooms had the same desks and chairs, so that was the plan.
So you get the meeting, he said that's what he wanted to do originally, but because of the budget, he was only gonna do one classroom.
Well, we have a facilities meeting on the nineteenth.
Well, advantage of that.
Yes.
Yeah. Will that give enough time if we do need? For the warrant article?
Yeah.
You have to defend word.
Um, and then the last thing, and I apologize, I wanted to email this, uh, last night, and I, I just got sidetracked when I was going through all this, I didn't, so. The warrant article for the collective bargaining agreement, article two. I've never seen it with numbers in it before we have finished negotiating, so it's usually X's, because it's, or, or.
Only for you guys, so.
But this is a public board packet. So I'm just concerned, so FYI, once it's done, it's done, but going forward, if we could just have X's in there, because. It's all, the board shouldn't even see it, we're negotiating, it's only, it's only the negotiating team, the board shouldn't be, be privy to it, and, and anybody can request the board packet and see. Oh, look at what they've offered, I'm just, made me real, it put the hairs up on the back of my neck. So I just wanna, but I wanted to send an email, so I apologize, I forgot to send an email about that, so, yeah. That's all I have for that. Anybody else have any? Alright, so then we're on to Director of Personalized Morning.
Um, I'm sure you have our results, and I'm having to answer any questions you might have.
I thought I had a question about the social studies, but I answered it. Never mind, it's good, thank you, I, I like the essential questions pieces of it, could it tie as all your, the yellow stuff too, as soon as I write the essential questions, I'm like, oh, I don't know where I put that.
Do they got any questions?
When are we doing the ask?
Twenty, twenty-six, twenty-seven, I'm actually gonna be going March twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth on a visit, because the whole process has changed, I'll be going to, uh, Bo High School for two days.
Twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Of March, yeah. Or twenty-seven, twenty.
Twenty-seven, wait. My, what, not year, what, okay.
Not the year.
What's the date?
No, but what is the, the year that we're gonna have to do the ask?
Twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Thank you.
Yeah, not the day.
Sorry.
I understand.
That was not clear, I apologize.
So, it sounds like it's a long way away. The ask is that twenty-six, twenty-seven is the year.
Yeah, yes.
Well, that's gonna come. And then they start to talk about these dates and what the.
Yeah, because last year, um, I applied for it to, if we could get a delay.
Yeah.
Because of pandemic, and they had approved that.
Yeah, which is, which is good, because it's a lot of work.
Yeah, and we're doing a lot of work, you know, social studies, we're gonna have that done, and things like that, and science curriculum, that'll go a long way.
Oh, there's so much work. Wait till you see it, if you're. It's a lot, I, but we've been, Gina and I have been on plenty of the committees and the visiting things and other jobs over the years, yeah.
We'll have everything else, we'll make it by anyway, but for them to be able to see that we have pretty much progressed.
The process is really streamlined, so that, so like, they will come, they will have two people, like, I'm gonna be going to Bo, and, uh, they'll have preliminary things done, and then, and then we make recommendations, and then they go back and work on it. Instead of before, it's almost like, gotcha.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, so now, you're working together, hey, can you look at this piece, where's this? And then they'll be coming back, and it's not like fourteen, fifteen people visiting for a few more days.
Put them all up.
So, they, they recognize that they need to streamline the process and the costs.
Yeah, because it was expensive and cumbersome.
Yeah, they're usually close to twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah. Thing was crazy. And stressful. Alright, really? Wow, oh, it was nuts, yeah. I think when you, they, they put them up at the Chesterfield Inn, because it was the only place, and it was in it, wow, yeah. They were living the high life.
Any other questions? Principal's reports.
So, Madam Chair, you have my report. Ready to answer any questions for you, I think we'll hold off right on the program studies, because that's a new business, so. Kinda straightforward, end of semester's coming up. And typically, what Hinsdale has done is do early dismissals, one fifth, uh, twelve fifty, excuse me. Uh, emails went out to parents today with the expectations, email blast. Middle school doesn't worry, doesn't worry, does not do midterm exams, that's kinda stressful for middle school, but they're gonna do maps testing during those longer blocks, they'll try and get that done, and that worked well last year, so. It's a great way to get that, that piece up too. See everybody at the winter concert on February seventh.
Unless, unless it's the budget hearing, because they have not scheduled that day. Sophia's excited. Oh, yeah, his email was great today, and Sophia, the other day, she was actually, she's like, I don't know if I'm gonna do, and then she was like, I'm probably doing it. She's, she's, she's really into it, never forgets her instrument. When I got that email today, I was like, oh. And I see the driver's end thing, it's really.
Started yesterday, it's the first class, sixteen students, I feel like they're gonna drive us their business right now. So we get them into routines, um, but they've started driving, um, they have Michael's old classroom, they push from two fifty to four fifty. They do driving during study halls, if a student has a study hall, um, they've been driving on the weekends already, so, um.
And who's the teacher?
John Cunningham is the actual teacher.
I know, I was gonna think of the same thing.
So, I mean, yeah, so.
That's great.
You know, the kids are happy, they're.
I bet the chair and sort of.
Parents are very happy, I was at that evening, just to make sure, kick it off, the expectations, kids being in school, good attendance, you know, good discipline, you don't need to be, you know, having intentions and you're gonna miss drivers end, and all those things, so.
Yeah.
There was a few parents.
Beginning conversations, a little scary, but really good.
Yeah. Yeah.
So great, so that, so, talk, talking to my son, he'll be sixteen in October. I've asked him if he signed up, he says, I think it's too late to sign up, I'm like, you don't need it till the fall, do they wait?
So they're gonna have at least one more session this spring.
Yeah.
Um, could have to be fifteen years and nine months to start it, so, yeah, the goal would be, because she'll have a new set of students that are now eligible, because we keep on moving through, so spring's always a popular time, because kids are now turning sixteen or close to, but.
So, can they still go to the office and sign up?
Yes.
Don't wanna make that issue.
Yeah.
Personal stuff.
Though, because of the whole thing, yes, like, I signed Kylie up, I started trying to in November, and did in January for her to start in what was supposed to be like August, but we ended up getting in, someone dropped it, so we go over to the next session, but they had a crazy waiting list.
And is there a cost of parents, or is it a cost of parents, right?
It's eight hundred dollars, yes, and they're using their own car, they're doing, using everything, we just give them the classroom.
So, I'm wondering, not to jump ahead to community connections, but wondering, because there was some talk about it online, and a lot of people don't know that we have it here.
The board didn't know until last month.
I can get like, like a blast about it, or something to put out.
Yeah.
To the community about it, that we have successfully.
Because I was confused.
Brought it back, you know, to a local level, at least.
Yeah.
It's not part of the school program anymore, but at least.
Yeah, that, that's the, the key piece, I don't wanna say, this is school spots.
Right.
We're just providing space, and they're doing everything else, so.
Yeah.
So we don't, we don't have any cost in the district, which just, no, it's just making, you don't have to take.
Yeah, they provide the insurance, um, coverage and all those.
Right. We're not providing drivers.
Right.
Just one.
We're providing a location for drivers.
Yeah, because I saw some stuff a couple of months ago, on, on one of the groups, and I read, and I'm like, well, this is crazy, I've never heard anything about this.
Well, and I think too, like, I know that the drivers end in key, when Parker took it, they don't advertise it, because it's so much. Overwhelming, and he told me, um, don't, don't spread the word anywhere, it is too much, we are overwhelmed. People are just getting it here, there, and like, they'll Google, and they'll call, and it's, and it's so much, so if he's not advertising it, I mean, they're getting it around school now, so the kids are aware of it, at least here, that are. I don't know. Yeah, it's, it's very.
Is that the guy who's doing it here?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's, they had just doubled classrooms when Kylie started, now they have another location, so I'm sure.
And he has a full-time job on top of the driver's end, so it's a lot, so he's maybe not. It is what it is, I guess, I'm just thinking, a lot of parents aren't aware of it, so if we can get that. Even if it's a, I mean, even if you send out like a, an email blast, you know, something like that.
Well, that's what we originally did to the kids then.
Right.
Well, yeah, we, we did an email blast that we're gonna be adding drivers, and you had to consider each one of them, that was bad, because we were hoping originally November. Then I got put off the massive, it's going.
Yeah, right, and when you do call the driver's end in key, he's gonna direct it, he'll tell you that it's in him soon. Yeah, he'll tell you who you're supplying.
Yeah.
Great, leaving perfect, thanks for organizing that.
Thanks.
That is nice to have it back. Any questions for the most?
Yeah, I have one question, and it kind of stemmed from Joe's report, so Joe had, has discipline data in this month, and I know Chris is no longer attending our meetings, and he always would provide us with the discipline stuff, and we had that dashboard, and it, it, it's kind of hasn't happened since the school year started, and I don't ever remember saying we didn't want it, but maybe, you know, new things start, whatever, do we want, I mean, to continue that, that was one thing we were getting every month, like, kind of like what Joe does, but we're not getting it for the middle high school.
I don't think we need it every month, but it would be nice to have it.
Or what about that, or what about the dashboard, because that, I don't think's actively that, or I haven't tried it, so I shouldn't say that, I haven't tried it like this school year, but.
That, well, that's why I haven't put it in, because we switched over to the dashboard when it was available to you folks.
I'll double check the dashboard.
So I don't, I don't know.
It's up, but with last year's data.
Last year's, okay. So maybe, I mean, I, I know right now, I get it, but I don't know what the board thinks of the board decision, but we, you know, wanted to have that information.
I'd like to, maybe quarterly instead of monthly, but that's where you could look, yeah, whatever time, I don't know how often it was up.
Part of information goes on.
So, we did a bunch of different graphs using the ADA A D M report, so the daily attendance and daily membership, and then we also ran a discipline log report, that then. Just statistics, no names, no, uh, nothing, just like by what, um.
Kind of like what, what Joe has.
Yeah, like, yeah, pretty much exactly like that, just a couple of different graphs, and that was for each school. That was something that, that Kim had asked me to throw together to replace what Joe and John had been.
That's right, and I forgot that we had that, that's why you did put it in here, because we could look, and then it, I must've looked back in like September, and it wasn't updated, and then I just fell off my radar until I saw it here, and I was like, oh, yeah.
Is, is that something the board would like us to, to bring back, either quarterly reports for the dashboard, or do you want both, or one, the other?
I mean, what's easiest for Justin, the dashboard, is it a, was it a big hardship, was it a?
I mean, I'm good with getting quarterly.
Yeah, I don't think, like, for me, to remember to go check one more thing, because I'm not.
I mean, it came in, it came at a time where we were having, it was a particularly awful time, so I don't know, it could still be awful, but that's why it came about.
One, one of the things that needs to be done, uh, before we start using that, is that the attendance portion of it's fine, I, I can easily just upload the new, new data, uh, now populate easily, we had changed how we were recording behaviors uh, for the tier, that's tiers, right, I can see T two and T one, and all that, to be able to then have a graph showing by tier level how many incidents, um, so I have to recreate those graphs at some point to be able to show that, and take advantage of it, if I just pull the report in now, uh, it'll just be the old graphs with new data, which is better than nothing, but it doesn't meet what we were aiming for last year.
Personally, like, these numbers are really straightforward. So, I don't personally, but that's just me.
So like, like quarterly, that?
Yeah, quarterly, like, what, what happened?
My, my personal opinion, I think, you know, it's one thing that's on, that you have to do.
Yeah.
And if we get on quarterly, we're getting quarterly reports from both schools, then I'm, I'm good with that.
Yeah, maybe the April meeting, the June meeting? Or if you wanted the March meeting, which is the day after. There'd be a lot to deal with on March, as, uh.
I mean, if it's April, Gina and I.
Yeah, I know.
I'm fine with April.
We can, we can request. If there's anything big happening, we should know about it.
Well, it'd be nice to backtrack, so you can see first quarter, we're at second quarter.
Yeah.
And then third, so we can, we can do that, we did it before, so. Okay.
Cool, thank you. We will be somewhere else that day.
Sunning yourself somewhere.
You guys are gonna be online.
No, that was shot, that was shot.
I know.
I don't think it'll be us.
Are there any other questions?
We might be together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, uh, a couple of other announcements besides what's in the report, and they remember that L N O Auto volunteered to do their fundraiser, and I got a call from Patrick down there, they, uh, raised six hundred and seventy-five dollars, so that will be donated into the needy fund for winter clothing and things of that nature, uh, possibly, you know, some sacks, things that kids may need. And, uh, I mentioned this to Mrs. Hemmer last week when we met, but we, um, and Kendra's worked on this as a daycare provider in town, but the, um, as her title put, experience response team received a grant and is off and running, due a large part to work by Chief Pataj and Mrs. Donahue. So, we hired a, uh, they hired the police department, a woman named Margaret Berry, who started to do her work. And on top of that, the Mananok United Way recognized this team as a Trailblazer Award winner for twenty twenty-three. So, unfortunately, I'm gonna have to miss the concert, because I do plan to go if we're not at the budget meeting on February seventh to represent the team, and Mrs. Donahue said she could go, Chief Pataj is not sure whether or not he'll be able to attend, but uh, there's room for others to attend if they wish.
Nice.
So that was kind of good news.
And so where, where is that, when is that?
Where, it's at Mananok Ford, um, it's at five thirty in the evening, on the seventh, and, uh.
Concert, I won't be there.
If you, if you are interested, uh, let me know, and I can register everybody that would want to go to that versus the concert. Might be able to make bold, I don't know, it's five thirty to seven is the scheduled time, but a lot of the time from like six twenty on, she said, it's mostly about just mingling, networking.
It's such a, it's such a good, I don't wanna call it a program, but organization that's happening, I think they're doing a great.
Good resource.
Yeah, good resource, yeah, that's a good way to put it, so.
Great, and that position is now filled and running.
Yeah, the woman named Margaret Berry was hired, and she's been at the elementary schools part-time, because it's grant-funded. And we're working on, uh, ironing out the referral process, and we know it's a need, so we gotta hit the ground running, really.
Right, yeah, usually. Cool.
And then any other questions, I can try and answer them. Madam Chair, you have my report, if you have to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Justin?
No, just a huge thank you to Justin and Sean and the team.
For sure, sure, still working on it.
It was very well, all around David and the I T and pretty well handled, I mean, yeah. Out in the community, out in other communities, and, you know, and he commented on how well it appears when it comes to the outside, so, yeah.
I hear you.
I, I sent David that photo.
About that, he just.
Yeah, I couldn't help myself.
I still keep them back at the chairs, I just thought we'd walk me.
Well, it's hanging in my closet, which acts as the phone booth.
Any questions? Thank you, Justin. Thank you, Justin. What is any discussion? We are. Bunch of many got there about the report Friday. They're putting on meeting. As I say, next Thursday. And then I have asked them, I don't know if I'm gonna do this now. But I asked them for a couple of days the week after that to to be, to do our work sessions. And to see if they work.
So they had, um, Monday, January twenty-second. And Wednesday, the twenty-fourth.
But you said the twenty-fourth and the what?
The twenty-second and on twenty-fourth, so Monday and Wednesday.
Unclear both days.
Yeah, I work for the administration. I can do the twenty-second but not the twenty-fourth, but you know. Cause I'm wondering, and I didn't suggest this to them, but I will suggest it if it works for everybody.
Because it's we're so late, yeah. And that way, I mean, if it works for them, so. Yeah, right up again.
Right. Yeah, if that works for everybody, I'm gonna suggest that we schedule days.
I can move my calendar.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What time do you think?
It's six thirty, it would be six thirty, yeah. For both days.
And so I can't do the twenty-fourth events, you know, but yeah.
Are we doing it here or down?
We'll have a discussion, but we usually do it here.
Right.
So I imagine I'll do it. Does it work for everybody else?
So six thirty both days?
Yeah. Are we putting those in our calendars?
Yeah.
Yeah.
When did you say the next? I mean, there's a. The next budget meeting is.
Um, we are meeting on. Eighteen. You said six, the budget committee is meeting on the eighteen to discuss the school as the, as the committee. And then also the twenty-fourth, correct? Yes.
And we think the hearing is gonna be the seventh, but we don't know.
That's the last week.
Yeah, the ninth is the last day, right?
Yep.
Yeah, it's weird. It's never been. We said, like, we definitely know by the thunder. We, we know when the DRA comes out with this thing in the spring. And that they set them all in there, so I don't know what's up.
Sorry.
Cause you usually set a date and the next day that the budget committee, the budget committee, cause it's there.
All right.
Well, maybe for money. Actually great for us. Maybe mention that.
No, one is the big.
I know the school has things happening.
One's a date, they always do a date and then a snow date the next day.
Yeah, so they could do the sixth.
Or something, the eighth or the eighth and the, well, it won't be named in life, but I get to.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah. It's usually, it's usually Wednesday, Thursday, one of those days.
Or maybe like, you know, the session. Yeah, no, no, Catherine said sort of about that. Is that the first week of February?
I mean, they could have it earlier, but we're not, it depends on to be ready.
Okay, good. Thank you. Was there any other discussion? Um, superintendent search.
Right here.
Um, we met. On Monday, thank you. I was just looking at, I was looking at my schedules all, they're all going into one another, all these meetings. We are going back out, right? We're going back out till the end, till the twenty-eighth. We had. We had some applicants and we just wanna see if we can get a bigger pool.
Yeah, she said opening it up has worked that in districts exclusively, like people weren't applying before the holidays made. And they, a couple places, they went back out and all of a sudden they have like four applicants, so.
We have put way too much time and money into this to do something like that. So, so that's where we're at. So the, uh, there, the twenty.
And we're meeting on the twenty-ninth.
Yeah, we'll be the next day.
We'll know more than, yeah.
We'll have way more information. All right, and then. So any questions? Program study.
So what you wanna look at is the ones that I think Maria put. Yeah, the cup, the coloring is a little easier to read.
Yeah, it was a little hard. I tried and then I just gave up. Okay, so the one that's not attached to.
Correct.
Yes.
Yes. So.
Even the red was a little hard, but I could read it. The green was impossible. The green was impossible. The red I could kind of do, but I was just.
Well, I guess we're all good then. We can move on.
No, no, no.
We like the color. So, um, you know, this process is a long process. It starts with department heads getting together. Um, and looking at courses, um, changing a little bit with, um, making sure the, uh. Course descriptions are up to date. Um, what I found it out and through some researches are AP course descriptions. Were not jiving with the new college board, so now those are up-to-date course descriptions for the AP courses. Um, and then Karen with several of our teachers has been working on the pathways. And if you notice, there's a lot of, a lot of information on pathways and AP seminar. Um, and again, this is to kind of, you know, guide students a little bit. You know, if it's getting more hands on, we have teachers that are more than willing to be a part of this, these pathways. Um, and it just broadens students and it dovetails nicely. With wherever we go with CT or, you know, and Rattler or, or, you know, team or wherever. Um, and it's kind of, it's not kind of exciting, it's exciting. And it's, it's a way to offer, we're not gonna be able to offer everything. But, you know. We'll be able to offer some of these courses for sure. And then we kept our other AP courses in there because like AP Calc. We can't sustain every year because we didn't have. Students. The year before, we had several students, so we don't wanna, um. Not give students that opportunity. And I know, uh, Dr. Ryan with regards to AP is looking at rural AP. Programming, not this year, but not the following.
Twenty-five, yes.
Um, working with a consortium of other school districts.
Correct.
Which can be, again, very beneficial for our kids. And then we took a few courses out, which is that we're out. Um, like, so the English ten honors, page fifteen. While we're doing the, uh, seminar, taking seven on, so that's why English ten honors is not being a part of that.
How did like the staff feel about the whole switch from taking some honors classes out and doing AP like? And I, I, I don't know. I'm just asking, like, what was your thought? They're finding that that is.
Yeah, the English teachers I discussed it with weren't so opposed to, to that switch at all. They were actually encouraged that there would be. More AP offerings. Uh, I know with U S history, it's, we try to offer it each year and. When Andrew Kidd missed already that we were gonna be doing more of a recruiting toward students encouraged by that.
Yeah, and again, AP for grade eleven, it'd be nice, you know, teaching two students. We wanna be able to offer that, but it's tough on the teacher and the student, that meaningful dialogue and discussions. And so the goal, especially with that AP seminar on grade ten. Okay, we get the kids excited. They see they're confident they could do it. And I'm gonna stick with this and maybe. Um, with as an eleventh grader. Think such as that. And I think the art is another great. You know, we have a lot of kids that wanna take art and they're pretty creative and to have more formalized, AP art is not an easy. Subject. Hence, uh, page twenty-five, the college mathematical investigations, well, our pathway courses have. Have taken care of that, that course.
No, you're fine. I just finished mine was, mine form was different than someone else's. But I see that like business math and personal mathematics, so it's, business math isn't really going away.
Right.
I had a question in the beginning. It's before the, I think, pages. Anyway, a couple pages in promotion requirements. We had a discussion last year, last spring, and I know when April and I met, um, in July with David. About, um, with everything, when this was, what spurred it was the prom and you're not a junior, you are junior, not senior, you are senior. You act like a junior, but you don't even have enough grades to be a sophomore, you know, that whole discussion. And so you weren't allowed to go to prom, you weren't allowed to go to prom. And we talked about, and of course, well, school starts and everything's crazy. Uh, revamping this, making it clear. So this hasn't changed here, but if, I mean, even if we approve it like this, that doesn't mean we can't work on it. In the coming months, because we wanted to get this nailed out, right? If I remember correctly, before it rears its head again at, at prom season. You know what I mean? We wanted to make it really clear how this works. Um.
I struggled with this as an interim because it's a longer shift than the cultural shift.
Yeah.
Um, and some casual conversation with staff during teacher leadership meetings that we had. Early around in the year, some teachers really expressed some, uh, pushback, uh, because they don't want to. Decrease the level of rigor. They think that by having, uh, standard diploma and then a diploma distinction. Doesn't hold all students to high expectations. We all have differing opinions about what that means, but that told us that. There's a lot of conversation, I think, that we would have to have in order to. Kind of address what that mean, you know, what the number of credits would be. Um, and so as, as a temporary or possibly interim. I feel it was gonna be within the bandwidth in order to get this done appropriately with all of the other things that have been coming on.
Yeah.
But it absolutely needs to be, uh, conversation because I've seen how it's not helping all kids. It's actually a great.
Or at the very least, I mean, I see that piece as different kind of also from the in practice of what are you? When it comes to social things, do you know what I mean? Like, what are you consider so, I mean, and it. By the time that rolls around, it'll be, you know, Mark, May or whatever, but we, we should try to think, because that was a very reactionary. Bunch of stuff on social media, a bunch of people upset and because we had a, we had a, here's what it means. Something else was happening in practice. There was a policy somewhere years ago and it didn't even fit that, so, you know, we probably should get a. This is what, this is what the, it means before that happens again. Do you know what I mean?
We also don't even tell parents how many credits. I have no idea how many.
Oh, they, you, we were told last spring when this reared its head that every parent gets a letter.
Yeah.
Every parent gets a letter.
Never.
That your child probably wasn't in danger.
Uh, well, I just mean like in general, like every year and I'm like, oh, I guess I could go calculate like.
Doesn't it show on Power School? I thought, I thought we were told it shows on Power School what your credit is.
I don't know what the parent says, but it is in Power School.
Okay. But it, when you log on on your phone, it's different. If you're on a computer, you get more information.
Oh, I see.
Yeah. I also feel like this is a touchy subject though, because it's. Looked at as black or white, but I feel like there's some gray area in there as well and it's, it's not about. Taking a monumental moment in a child's life with his friends, for their friends, her friends, whoever's friends. Um, for something where you're falling behind a little, but you're still on that way. Right, and I think that, uh, more so than ever now, um. In which this happened last year, uh. The student now, I think it shows there's a lot more important things in life than missing out on really good opportunities. So I'm really glad that the student was able to go and I feel like this is a touchy subject that. We've gotta make sure that it's, it's not black or white. There is gray in this type of stuff.
We should at least have a framework and an understanding.
Yeah, but it's, it's a very different, right. It's just a difficult.
You know, I mean.
Spot there and we're not.
I'm not saying these people are black or white, but we need to at least have, this is what the expecta, you know what I mean? So when someone comes to it, uh, we can be like, well, this is what. It is.
This is your class. I feel like the expectation is you've been prompted.
Well, that, again, and that's one of the discussions, but I think in last spring, just when it happened, some, one of the issues was, one of them was like. Way, way, way down in credits, like, you know what I mean? Nowhere near. So I'm just saying.
Can it be age-based though?
But that's what I'm saying, we should, we should define it.
Right.
Just.
Because these are the people you've grown up with. These are the people you wanna go to prom.
Exactly, yeah.
You don't wanna go to prom with kids you don't even know.
Right, yeah.
So I think it should be age-based.
Discussion, yeah, and I'm not against that by any means, but we should at least be like, discuss it, decide it, so that it can be applied. Cause we had no, no way to apply. You know, we had three different things going and everybody was doing something different. Yeah.
I, I, I think that the principal would have some discretion.
Yeah, nothing is black and white, right?
No, and I'm not saying it is.
I was just trying to say, it's just, it's not black or white. We've got to.
We were just blind, the, the, the administration appeared in the board even because we got, we got approached about it, it's like blindsided by it. You know what I mean? And it was like, well, what is, what's the deal? You know what I mean? We didn't have anything. You gotta have, you have to have a framework to back stuff up when you make decisions, uh, no matter, even if it's a. Well, you know, a, a flexible framework or it's like whatever, you, you still gotta have something.
I'll just say this one thing about it. We, before, I mean, this is partially my decision for sure. And, uh, because we had kids who thinks, thought they were gonna be seniors and they weren't even close to being able to graduate.
Yeah.
And so we keep on going from year to year, moving on. Now, our, our seniors who. Didn't meet that eighteen credits, but were still gonna graduate. That was never an issue there. In the yearbook as senior, they, they were eligible for the senior trip. It was that two people for the prom.
Right.
That, you know, that was the issue and we worked it out.
Yeah.
But, uh, and there was stipulations, okay, get your credits up at the half-year point to be there.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, it created some ruckus and I had phone calls in the summer. It was the summer, which was most like, why is my kid still in a ninth grader visor? You know, that's where it really hit. The, the dances and senior trip, I mean, that was. Not as critical. That was easy to work through, but, uh, it became a summer thing. And then once. You know, explained to the parents, many of them came in, you know, and said, okay, you still can graduate, you can still graduate on that. But we've gotta get your credits up. Any other piece, and it shouldn't be necessarily the state when we do testing, it's your expected graduation. So when we test, so for the SAT and things like that. He, in the old days, they used to, you could be a tenth or ninth grader. And you never took the ECAT because you jumped from ninth grade to eleventh grade. It was a good way for schools not to. And then the state caught on to what schools were doing. This was a long time.
Yeah, I was on the board for that, yes.
But, uh, you know, so, you know, no, everybody's gonna take the exam, you know, so, um. So, yeah, could, I, I'm just trying to wrap my head around what, we can't put it every scenario in here, but. You know, it could, it could affect.
With the board and administrators to, to just sit down and go, maybe make a more clear policy on it. You know, I mean, I'm assuming have, I'm assuming.
The board doesn't. I think it's administrative.
Yeah.
But, you know, just to get a better, clearer framework.
I know what you're saying.
Yeah.
And I think.
With the discussion.
The bigger picture is we shouldn't have the, like, students who think they're seniors.
And really being.
Credits of a freshman, yes, so. That should be addressed.
Yeah, that's a bigger.
We, yeah, 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 far before then, that's, that's scary.
Yeah, and we were having that conversation even with Wayne and I, I remember when it was first when we came in, it's Kim and you, we had this, this been going on for years. Yeah.
But I, that's like a guidance.
Yes, that's a guidance issue.
I have other.
Yeah.
Uh, Justin, do you know, cause it's been a long time since I've logged in on Power School on a computer. Do you, back like when Parker was in ninth grade, he could go on and see like year by year where they were. Is that still? Yeah, you could see it on, you could see like, oh, he got so many credits his ninth grade year.
Right, so from the parent, parent side, I don't know.
You don't know.
Uh, so on the backend, obviously, it's all there for administrators to see. I control access as far as reset passwords for parents. Um, at the elementary school, we don't provide access to parents, so I, I personally don't have experience with.
Okay, I'll go, I'll log on.
Okay.
Desktop and see, cause I, I feel like I actually went on maybe as last year. And I actually, I think I called Kathy because I'm like, wait a second, I hadn't been on in a long time. I'm like, where is all of the? The piece and I think somewhere at some point. The piece, and I think somewhere, at some point, there was a shift, and we don't, I don't think. Parents could see that on Power School anymore, on the computer part of it, and that might be helpful when parents log in, and I don't know if you. Can alter it or Power School's program outcomes where it would say that somewhere, how many credits? They have, but.
So, some, you see change like that happen, sometimes it could be an administrative decision. Obviously, it predate me, it's been a year and a half at, at the Power School admin. It could be, uh, Power School does periodic updates, they might change permissions by default. That happens sometimes, it happened with us with how we run reports for student access. We used to be able to just run a report, use it in password form, we can't do that anymore. So the Power School does weird things sometimes. So if you see it as a parent, certainly like guidance or the front office now, and no. How many credits?
Yeah, we'll print on our report card for the end of the year, like. Like, like fourth quarter, end of the year, credits. Put on the, on the report card. That, that, that might even be helpful for a parent, where they're looking over that report card and they can see, oh, okay. Boom, 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 because I mean, I feel like this, this right here, to proceed to sophomore, six credits, boom, boom, that could be on there, and then what your child has for a credit. And parents would be like, that would catch parents' eye, and then you're aware at the end of the year.
But that's why we send separate letters. Because not everybody reads that report card or gets it. But that's, I'm just saying, in the sense of home, to make them aware.
As a parent, it's nice to know where they're at. Credit wise, you know, so putting it on the report or. If it's not already.
And it'll save Kathy Johnson.
Would be, would be nice for as a parent, anybody. But yeah, sending letters out when they're in danger, obviously.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's good too. They don't stop doing that.
All right, credits, 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 credits. All right, so, nice, any other questions about?
I had a question, so not really questions, but the schedule change procedure. Saying that has to be done before the start of the school year or semester, or quarter, however assorted, but they don't even get their schedules. Before.
Before what?
Like before school.
They didn't get it this year, they will get it. They, they didn't get it last year, they will get it this year.
And I think also, like, just reading through this scheduling process and. Like the, I know this year especially courses were like a disaster for every student I talked to, a lot of kids were panicking. So I think more work needs to happen with guidance and students in the spring to set them up, so that is. Possible, because I know a lot of them didn't, and. You know, meeting with the guidance counselor and saying, you know, a lot of kids do know, you know, how, this is, I think, what I want to do, so. Getting them on that track and setting them up. With like, I know Belax, like right now Kylie's taking psychology and like probability and statistics classes that she's interested in versus. Just what's offered, so that work can happen in the spring. Then, I think the scheduling process, as it's listed, will work, but I know the way things went this year, that definitely. Won't work.
No, I, I agree, and actually, wherever we go with this tonight. You know, the goal is to start scheduling before February vacation, and to be done before April vacation. And then that way, we can work through, you know, we'll know better staffing, where we're at with staffing, because that's always. Nerve-wracking, and, and get kids their schedules, and then have those individual meetings with the counselor. And to take care of that, so, yeah, you have a schedule, teachers have schedules, it wasn't just kids.
I mean, for years, that's how we would do it, we'd improve it at this timeframe, because you want to have kids signing up for classes, so we know for the. Deadline, if we need to. Not renew, right, you know, based on stat, based on that kind of thing, so that's how it worked for many years, and then.
Yeah, that's fantastic. I was reading through, I was like, that is.
Yeah, no, if it was like it was this past year, or last year. Yeah, no, you gotta do a much better job.
So, we need a motion to approve the. Yeah, I make a motion to approve the program at studies. Oh, second.
I just want to thank Matt Azaro and Joe Smith, they put a tremendous amount of work into this, so, to get it where you guys have it now.
Yeah, thank you.
And, and thank you, Maria, for adjusting the color. I'm glad it wasn't just me, I debated whether or not even saying anything, but I'm just, I can't do it, I just can't do it.
There's some alignment issues that still need to be corrected, but that'll all be taken care of.
I'm gonna move it on, any other business? Justin? We don't need to.
We will not need that for now.
So you guys can go live or hang out. Want to remind Joe and Johnny on the policy coming next week, and I'll be sending some stuff.
I, I mean, that's fine, right, every day, I mean, I, for some reason, I don't. Sixteen at four thirty.
Yes, Karen, get right, wanting to look up ninety's font.
He's got to be like ninety.
He is, what are we?
Why, it's important to get down there.
Where is it, Kendra?
It's Hartford.
Oh, that's not even bad.
See, we kind of bridge into the night.
I'm sure there is.
All right, all right, so moving on, community reports. Behavioral support team.
We're only reporting recently.
So nothing.
Sorry, any budget committee? Uh, community connections. Yeah, you know, the more information I get, the more I post, so, yeah. Uh, facilities, we have a meeting on the nineteenth. Yes, thank you, Maria. So, I'll have more next month. Um, HASS, I missed. I went to HASS, um, they're doing great, they're, um. I mean, why, what did she say? They have quite a bit of middle scores, it was.
About half the middle school.
Half the middle. Was it sixty-eight? I feel like she said maybe.
She said fifty-eight.
Really bringing a lot of people in, they've got like a, they've got so much support for the drama club right now that, um. To draw the people in, so.
So the drama is, is it elementary or middle, because I know Jess does it, right?
Yep, Jess, and Mr. P has taken a role in it now.
Oh, that's right.
And, um, yeah, they're doing really well, and they've got a good, a hundred and something.
An elementary. But that's for el-, for the middle school, they have that.
Yeah, the, oh, yeah, the cooking. Just got new, new staff members, um, so. They're, they're roaring.
It's been a while, but sometimes, back years ago, they would bring food and whatnot.
Well, in order to, we didn't have any students here tonight, so we'll, we'll have to make that into.
Yeah, but cheese, we got one time. Honey, yeah, yeah, something else, so.
Seems like things are running pretty smooth over there, they're enjoying it, it's going good right now, and they've got a good, good enrollment, I mean, the middle school was pretty impressive.
Never been that.
And we used to try, remember we would have flyers, Gina, and we would go to games and stuff, like.
I'm gonna, I, I want to prove David Ryan wrong, so I'm gonna talk with Mary Ann, because I feel like she said sixty-eight to the middle schoolers.
Like he comes back, like sixteen.
And Caitlin, I don't know if you were on the board for this, Gina will remember, we have now entered the cocktail hour. That was a suit half saying, you haven't said that in a while. Yeah, a little punchy.
Well, especially during COVID, when we're here till midnight. After ten, thanks.
Do you want to move on to legislation, why is getting that?
Yeah, I, I don't really have anything, I wasn't prepared, but Barrett has been. You never said what you were gonna get, Kendra, though.
You only covered the. Just, just getting right over. I'm, I, I was kind of shocked with the number, because it was.
I know, I work, I'm the only man in this building all day. It's all good.
No, it was great.
Yeah, let's say, I, I, I don't really have anything, I wasn't prepared, but Barrett has been going to the legislature a lot, um, he was quoted in an article. Which was on NUR or NHPR, something about, um, there was a, a hearing, or, you know, in front of the, Ed, Senate Ed, about, um. I shouldn't have thought of this before I started talking. But about, uh, teachers, something about teachers, Donna, you and I talked about, I sent you the link, um, about teachers and. Yeah, let's forget it, but Barrett had a good quote in there. I will tell you later, I'm drawing a total blank, you know what I mean?
Teachers, come on, think of an article.
One about, the bill about the. Disposing.
Oh, yes, disclosing to parents about students' gender identity, but not only that, other stuff too. About the, thank you, Donna, and it was, and, and Barrett, you know, spoke about that, but he's been testifying it a lot, he's been at the legislature a lot lately, so.
Uh, personnel.
We're in negotiations.
And ongoing.
Needs to wrap up soon.
Uh, policy committee.
Tuesday. Whatever date that is, the. June sixteen?
Looks like I wrote June, and I, and like, because I, I have sloppy handwriting. January, not June.
That, that school year moved fast. But one for January.
So selectmen, they're also in budget mode, there is talk about the transfer station, which I'm sure will be a big tough.
That's gonna be a big.
Because it's basically because the trash service we have now is stopping curbside, and no one is doing curbside.
Really?
Well, it loo-, it looked like they could do curbs, but they're getting a different truck, so you'd have to have.
There would, it would cost everybody in town a hundred and forty dollars to get the bin on their own. They have to get the bin.
And you have to room for the bin, right?
Like, or however, yeah, I don't know, anyway, so.
That was one of the concerns, was there, no, and bins and.
Elderly getting it out there and all that.
Well, the elderly getting their trash to the transfer station isn't ideally.
So the blue bags are going away.
And it doesn't look like they're going towards the curbside thing up there, with the bins. So they're talking about the transfer station, um, adding a day, like, it's gonna be a four days, late day. I don't know, they've got, but they've got a couple of different plans, they haven't nailed down one for sure yet, but they're, um. It's all in talks and stuff like that, so when they do come to town meeting, I'm sure it'll be a big discussion in town.
So if they go with.
It is cheaper with the transportation.
But you have to put it in your own car and take it.
Right, but theoretically.
Or, or the option, other option is you get your own dumpsters.
Or somebody concerned with this going around, I think the.
I'm sure there will be people doing that. Well, I just don't want to put trash.
I have a dumpster, so. No, I, I was thinking I'm gonna have to put a lock on it.
April lives around the corner from me, so I'm sad.
So, um, that's been the major talk, besides the budget, for the selectmen, these that. Wow, I don't envy them.
Usually, we're the ones with the hot button.
Who goes first issue?
They do. They do.
I haven't heard a word, but Karen's not here for me to ask, so I'm not sure, actually.
That's why I grabbed John and Joe for policy before then.
We'll give you an update soon, we have to revise our professional development master plan.
I know she said she was working on stuff to do with that, so I wasn't even sure, okay, so, master plan, that's.
And that's by the end of the school year or whatever.
I believe we're on an extension already. The district asked for an extension last year.
All right, then, so that's fine.
Uh, superintendent search, we already talked about, what's the other questions? Tuition explored. I haven't received any emails or really been doing nothing, so. We're in, so wellness.
Wellness, we are gonna be having a meeting, I, I did email you back, my.
You did, yeah, I actually had a very good response. Jenna, I forgot you, because I'm looking at it now going, oh, I didn't have Jenna on there, because I emailed everybody that was on the list last year. And then added like the new nurse and.
I know we was.
Yeah, because, yeah, we were.
So when is the meeting, so Gina?
We don't have one yet.
I want to do one if we can, the end of January, one the end of March, and one the end of May. And get three of them. And that pretty much is what they did last year as well. Yeah, so end of January, we, yeah, so I.
I know, last year we were talking about potentially having a meeting monthly, and then we hadn't, also, I was like, um.
I noticed you did three meetings last year, they started in January, and so.
All right.
And I think I want to set one for October as well, just to, like, get them on the books, to.
Be present.
I love that. Everyone loves that idea for October.
One of the topics, yeah, exactly. One of the topics is we do need to update our wellness policy.
Right, yeah, which is like a big undertaking.
I was getting overwhelmed when we were looking through it. And the state reached out to me to go, hey, so you remember? Yep, we're on it.
Cause we're next three years.
Yeah, they, you get that amount of time. She said, Jane, the spring of twenty-four is coming. I'm like. Look at me.
Your extension is about to be up.
All right, citizen comments, Donna? Our only citizen in attendance.
And now.
Are you a citizen?
This has been a, a great meeting. Your person for it has been awesome.
You should have a citizen.
A word. Right, yeah. Most of ten and kings.
Yeah, because you're always on Zoom, so really, unless, unless we have, um, guaranteed.
I'm just surprised there's nobody else.
No, I don't, I mean, I double check, like, I don't know that, I should just what happened. And I did post it on the.
Just no hot button topics right now.
Yeah.
They're like, it's budget.
It's, it's the meeting after the holidays. I think that got bored. For sure. All right, well, then we need, um, a motion to go into non-public.
I like motion to go into non-public.
Roll call.
Wait a second.
All right, jumping on.
Roll call.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. We're not public.
You shut that door behind you?
Um.